I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that our district clerk leads us in the pledge, please.
Pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Our first order of business is the administration of oath of office to our newly-elected board member, Mr. Mark Elidge. Um, Mark, welcome. Um, if you can, do you have the oath with you? Okay, so if you can repeat after me.
Rose, stand. Stand, stand.
Oath, thank you.
Stand up and repeat after me. Thank you. All right. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Board of Education Member.
Of the Office of Board Education Member.
In the Penfield Central School District.
Penfield Central School District.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, well, congratulations and welcome on board.
Thank you.
Before we approve the agenda, I'd like to salute our lacrosse team, who is right now on St. John Fisher Field, playing sectionals against Webster Thomas. We're very proud of them, very proud of Coach Embry, so wish them good luck tonight. Examination alteration and approval of agenda. May I have a motion, please, that the agenda of May 28, 2013 be approved as submitted?
Some more.
Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed, thank you. Public hearing for the proposed district code of conduct. This portion is about the district code of conduct and, I think, Dr. Grimm, and I don't see Mr. Hennig out there.
Unfortunately, he could not be here tonight.
All right, so Dr. Grimm will do a summary for us of the district code of conduct, and then if there are any comments only pertaining to the code of conduct, you know, once we are done with the summary, that would be it. So, Dr. Grimm?
Okay.
Thank you.
I've got a few PowerPoint slides. Code of conduct, public hearing. A couple of weeks ago, Mr. Hennig had come to talk about how we had consolidated the many different handbooks and some of the regulations and policies, so that we had a separate, distinct code of conduct, a separate document. So, we did do that, and we found that we needed to do some alignment with some recent changes in law, mostly due to with the Dignity for All Students Act. And we've listed the coordinators in the code, and we also added a student bill of rights and responsibilities, which is a nice way to look left and right. You have the right to do this, but also the responsibility to do that. It also redefines the expectations of all the different stakeholders. And there's an important piece toward the end about the dissemination and review of the code, where, and this is part of an excerpt from a policy, and in a couple of weeks, actually tonight, we have a first reading for a new code of conduct policy that specifically talks about what should be contained within the code of conduct, and a piece of that is how it will be disseminated and reviewed. So, there's going to be an age-appropriate, plain-language summary for all students at different levels, and a summary written in plain language to all parents at the opening of the school year. And it's going to be displayed throughout the websites, and all of the teachers and employees will have a copy, and all new employees will get a copy, and we'll be making copies available for review by students as well. The dissemination on an annual basis, it will be publicized and explained to students. This happens at the beginning of the year for many of the students in the grade-level assemblies, and a copy will be prominently displayed on the website. It will be reviewed annually, or, and as necessary, and we're going to need to understand how effective the code's provisions are, and we do get a report, summary report regarding discipline and other associated data related to that. So, we had, I should say, May, May 7, Board of Education presentation. We've got the public hearing tonight, and you're going to be voting on it at the next meeting. Now, there's an opportunity for public comment.
Thank you. Well, we start with the board. Any questions or comments, board members? All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the board regarding the code of conduct? All right, well, thank you. I guess that's it. This concludes our public hearing, then, regarding the proposed district code of conduct, and we'll be voting on it at our next meeting, June 11th. Approval of consent agenda. May I have a motion, please, that the board approve the consent agenda as listed in your packet?
Some more.
Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed, thank you. Attached to your packet is the treasurer's report for the month ending March 31, 2013. May I have a motion, please, that the treasurer's report, including cash report, general fund cash report, general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue, and expense budget report for the month ending March 31, 2013, be approved?
Some more. Second.
Any questions or comments? Yes, John?
I just think the school lunch thing is in great shape this time of year compared to the past. For some reason, that just looked a lot better, so I think there's some efficiencies going on there, or maybe you're cracking the whip, but I just thought that looked very positive for a change, particularly for where we are.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed, thank you. Special report. We have a special presentation. We're celebrating the robotics this evening. Can I ask you, please, to come to the table, use the microphone, so that people who are at home can hear you? And I see that you've brought no robots with you this evening.
We do. Well, hi, I'm Shayna Rudy, and I am a junior, and I am a student on the Penfield Robotics Team.
I'm Tom Murphy, and I am a senior on the Penfield Robotics Team. Our main mission has been to inspire students to become leaders through engineering and the fun of first robotics, first being for inspiration and recognition of science and technology, and this year, we will be celebrating our 10th season since our establishment as a team.
We have a total of 45 students on our team this year. We have 24 mentors, 12 engineering mentors from our main sponsor, Harris, and 12 from our community. We have three faculty advisors, Mr. Brewer, Mr. Pizzo, and Mr. Pelletier, as well as we have a middle school technology teacher, Mrs. Krug, who helped us out during competition season.
We were at two regionals and the St. Louis World Championships this year, at the Finger Lakes Regional held in Rochester's Institute of Technology. We were awarded, as a team, the gracious professionalism award. Our main mentor from Harris Incorporated was Larry Lewis, who was awarded the Woody Flowers Award, and one of our juniors on the team this year, Sienna Robertson, was awarded the Dean's List Award for outstanding leadership as a student.
At the Boston Regional, we won the competition with our robot, as well as we got the gracious professionalism award again. We also got the industrial safety award, and I was awarded the star of the day award.
At the St. Louis World Championships, we had the pleasure of bringing along Finney High School with us to the championships, where we were able to help a record number of teams, and have now hosted our all-rukey meet-and-greet, which entails bringing all of the new teams from across the globe to meet with one another in a social gathering.
Throughout the year, we've done many community outreach things. We have done many demonstrations. The main one this year was the Rochester Museum and Science Center, where we did a full-day demonstration at their Science Saturday, as well, we have done demonstrations in all of our district elementary schools. We've also done numerous community service, including Toys for Tots, where we distributed toys to over 2,000 kids, as well as we did the cystic fibrosis walk, the leukemia and lymphoma walk, and Food Link.
We also hosted a special community service known as the Make a Difference Day or Mega Drive, hosted with our allied team, Team 340, Greater Rochester Robotics. Through this community service, we were awarded a $10,000 grant, which we will be using the entirety of to start new teams. We were featured in the USA Weekend Magazine, and we were granted 74 volunteers from various robotics teams. We collected over 100 food items, over 1,000 books, nearly 3,500 pounds of electronics, and 40 units of blood.
We also do outreach within our own school. We do various fundraisers in our school, including the bottle and can recycling and the electronic recycling, and on June 3, we're having a blood drive here, as well as we have had in the years past. We've done several demonstrations here, including during the talent show and pep rally. We also did one during the budget vote and freshman orientation. And we are currently working on setting up a middle school-level robotics team in Bay Trail for next year.
In addition to supplying for the local younger schools, we also provide for other high schools within the state and outside of the country, including several off-season events held in the fall and before actual competitions. Most recognized are the Ra'Chacha Ruckus, which is held at the Monroe County Dome Arena, where this year, we've had 37 teams from varying states, including Canada, and before the actual competition season, we will host a rally, which is within the school, that has been covered by the media, and this year, we were graced with the presence of one of our alumni, Shawna, who is a guest speaker and spoke about her internship at NASA.
Many of our alumni have gone on to pursue STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, and math. 92% matriculate, and 87% of those pursue STEM careers.
This year, we have 11 seniors. This is our photograph of all of the seniors that were present at the championships in St. Louis.
So, we have the robot here with us. We have our second robot, which this year, we used to do prototyping. It is non-functional right now, and it's also a little bit of a safety hazard, so it's going to stay there, but it has a circular shooter, which is this big round thing, if you can see it, and it is very, it can collect four discs, as well as shoot them out, and it can do that scoring autonomously, as well as it has these two hooks on the front that helps it climb a pyramid, or kind of like a jungle gym-looking thing, which is very dangerous, and it lifts it about eight feet in the air. We also have a very tall robot to defend against full-court shooters this year, which is part of our strategy for the year. And here is a video of our robot, and in St. Louis, Missouri. We are in the left side, climbing on the blue pyramid. And this is just us climbing. You can see us kind of climbing on the far corner, and we are gotten up one level. There are three levels to it, and you get various points for different levels. We also dump three discs into the top of the pyramid for additional points. This was a very rare thing during competitions, to see someone climb to the third level consistently. Does anyone have any questions for us?
Well, thank you for your presentation. Board members, questions or comments? Kathryn?
During the competition, did everyone have, did everyone build the same type of robot?
Uh, the same type? No.
Okay. But they were all throwing the discs?
Yep. They all had to accord to the game. There's like rules.
Okay.
So, just like there would be in sports, there's different types of players. You could be a defender, you could be an offense, you could be a shooter-only, you could be a climber-only, or you could have a robot that just does everything.
Thank you.
You mentioned during the competition, you helped a record number of teams. How did you help these teams?
Uh, sorry. We provide, in addition to support through our leaders, a varying variety of parts to all of the teams, as well as different tools and the like. We also have offered to teams with dysfunctional robots the usage of our robot in their absence for either competition or practices. We also create a crate that is given to a rookie team each year that makes it to St. Louis, so that they may have something to send their robot in every year.
Thank you. Camille?
Can you talk a little bit about, you said that you went with the Finney School, and how did, is that's a partnership that you established? And what do you mean by that? What did you do with the students and teachers there?
Well, they won the competition here at the Finger Lakes Regional, which they were not expecting, and so they found that they did not have any funding to which to go to St. Louis, which was very saddening for them. And so, we agreed to help pay for their registration and their busing, so that they could go, and they, we spent a lot of time with them, since we were very closely related, and they're just kind of a close team that we've bonded with throughout many years.
That's great. Thanks.
Thank you. John?
Two weeks ago, there was a program at St. John Fisher called Eyes on the Future, which is a business program, and I was very pleased. There was 800 people there from the business community, and we were there, and the robot was there. I'm not sure which one, but it was really nice to see that, and a couple of the mentors were there as well, I think from Harris in particular, and the speaker happened to be the managing editor of Fast Company Magazine, which was all about entrepreneurs, so I thought it was great that we were represented, and we were the only ones there with a machine, and I think you've done that for a couple of years in a row at least, so that was great to see on behalf of Penfield.
Barb?
And with the younger people that you are mentoring, do you see those numbers increasing? I'm seeing a nod from the mentor, yeah.
Yes.
Uh, yes. I'm just trying to understand, are you referring to the lower school systems, or within the Penfield High School system?
Within the Penfield High School, and then, I mean, you've been going to elementary schools. Do you see that? Are they coming to some of your local activities and?
Uh, yes, we encourage a lot of our older members of the team to assist the younger members, and then we further assist all members of the team to become mentors in all of the local elementary school-level teams.
Okay. Thank you.
Karen?
You guys are a fine example and a great model. How much does that robot weigh?
Um, the actual working robot with all the parts on it weighs-
The one that climbed the tower?
Yes. That weighs 118.7 pounds at our final weight, and the maximum was 120 pounds. But you had to add a 10-pound battery and 20 pounds for bumpers.
That's incredible. If you could get that to climb trees and clean gutters, you guys would be great. I mean, it's amazing that-
Tree trimming.
Exactly, all that. I mean, it's amazing to see that, and you could hear the excitement in the voice of the announcer, "It's at the third level!", and it's like, holy cow, great job. You guys always, always impressed. Thank you so much for representing Penfield so well.
And we would also like to thank you guys. We would like to thank our superintendent and the board for everything you guys have done for us. We also would like to thank the athletic director for usage of the East Gym, and the janitorial and teacher support that we get to make this program possible. Thank you.
Great job. Well, thank you for coming this evening. It's always a highlight for us of the year when you come and you bring a robot, working or not, that I can see or not. So, thank you. You're a fine example of the amazing, you know, clubs and groups that we have here at Penfield High School. We are very proud of you. Thank you for making us look so good.
I do want to add the partnership that exists with Harris and with Larry, and just the way that that, this would not be possible without that level of adult mentorship that exists beyond the school community. So, it takes it to those next levels, and as you can see, not only are they producing outstanding scientific engineering work, but the community service that's built into it is a model for any club, so, and I do recommend attending the local competition, because you talked about the announcer, which I think the one I saw at RIT was a former graduate. It was like being at, I can't even describe it, just the excitement and the, you just, you can't understand what it's like unless you're actually there. And then to see all of the, the way that everything is organized, and there's a little pit area, and everybody's there, and the families are involved, it's just one of those things that's so special, it's, you can't describe it in words, and I think it's just a wonderful thing, and thank you for doing what you're doing and encouraging younger students, too, because you're not just thinking about yourself, you're trying to build the program in the middle level, and the elementary schools, it's just a great, great thing.
Thank you very much for being here this evening. Next, we have a textbook recommendation. Ms. Tetharpoulos, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. We're here to introduce a new textbook for our college composition class. We've been fortunate enough to partner with FLCC for three years now, and they've done a program review for their college composition course that's aligned with our Common Core standards for New York State. They, too, are looking beyond college. They're looking at career readiness. So, during their program review, their, the objective for their new course, or the modified college composition course, is to allow students to develop their abilities to write at the college level and to think critically. So, with that, they have introduced a new textbook, and we've sent our teachers that will be teaching the course next year, and through the, through the professional development, we've come to realize that this aligns perfectly with what we're doing now in our department with college and career readiness with the new standards. The partnership with FLCC allows our students to receive three college credit, credits when they complete the course, if they maintain a B average, and the great news is, this year, they will, the district purchases the books for them, they will have to pay a minimum fee, and that, that's it, whereas before, they would have to have paid the $150 fee. Now, the fee, they haven't established yet, but it will be between $25 and $35, which will be a great help for our community. And the next portion of this is, they wanted this to be a writing portfolio. They're going to be concentrating on the process of writing, revision, reflection, and truly going beyond just writing in the modes of, you know, informational writing, but writing throughout the whole aspect, and really concentrating on a portfolio that they can build and they can take with them for their careers, wherever that will take them. So, this is a new textbook, and if we want to continue that partnership, we would have to approve this textbook, or we wouldn't be able to continue the partnership. They have afforded us some opportunities if we would like to offer our students more courses that they can gain college credit, that we can join in on that conversation. It would be a 102 course and even a 103 course. We're looking into that, and we have interest. I know next year, we have five sections of college composition coming in in the, in the 2013, 2014, so this is a new textbook.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Okay, thank you very much.
We now move on to our visitor's speaking time, and Mr. Dixley has indicated that he wishes to address the board. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Dick Dixley from 83 Huntington Meadow. I know that later in the meeting, you were going to formally acknowledge the results of the budget vote on May 21st, but I'd like to provide a perspective that you, I expect you probably would, might overlook, look in that announcement. I know that creating budget, school budget, is a difficult task, and I know it's an elongated task in this district, and you have to compete, all the things you have to do as a district with the economic realities and all that stuff. It's, it's not easy. In the end, it's we, the people, that get to decide whether you have a good budget or not, and, and on May 21st this time, we, the people, decided by a literal two-to-one margin, two-to-one voting margin, that the budget was good, and I think that's an accomplishment that this board ought to be very proud of. In addition to that, I noticed that both in propositions two and three, dealing with buses and the capital project here, that each of those passed by an even wider margin, and each case, each case was within one percentage point of being a literal three-to-one, three-to-one approval rate, and I think that that's really great. I think that's, that's an indication, the proof is in the pudding, is an old saying, but that's an indication that, that the process you have is a good one, that you are indeed in touch with the community, with this community, and that the process is a good one. I know that you won't rest on your laurels this year. I know next year, we'll start all over again, and we'll be looking to squeeze, squeeze, squeeze the budget here and there, and do what you, do what you can, and I know you'll do that, and I have confidence, but, but I thought I'd provide that, provide that perspective, because a two-to-one margin is, is quite phenomenal, I think, and I think that's a great accomplishment, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate your involvement always. I know you've been to many of our conversations on education. You always give us a great perspective. Thank you. This board really appreciates that. All right, and next is our student representative. Good evening, Gwen.
Hello. Um, just as like an update, there are nine more days of classes for high schoolers.
No one's counting.
Yeah, no one's counting. So, it's slowly approaching the end of the year, which is exciting and also kind of sad. I've noticed that each year, as I get older, it's more, it's a lot more sad each graduation, because I'm more, a lot more close with the graduating class. Just as little things, NHS induction went very smoothly. It was very nice. The Dave Carring went really well. I know we had media coverage from, I think it was News 10. It was really fun. We did a lot of work. I think it was Schools 30 and 34. As you mentioned, the lacrosse game is today, so good luck to the lacrosse team, Mr. Embry. And the student-faculty basketball game is this Friday, what is that, May 31st? I think it's at 7:30. It's a fundraiser for a children's charity, I think, for sick-
Daystar.
Yeah, Daystar, yeah. So, that's what's going on.
All right. Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments for Gwen? All right, thank you. Next, you move on to our superintendent's reports. Dr. Grimm.
Okay. We've got lots of student honors happening at the end of the school year here. We've got National Spanish Exam, Level Fives, Silver, Bronze, and Honorable Mention. There are so many names that I'm, in the next few slides, that I'm not going to read them out loud, we'll just look at them on the screen. The National Spanish Exam, Level Four, Gold Ward. Also, Level Four, Silver, Bronze, Honorable Mention for both. Level Three for our National Spanish Exam, Gold, Silver, and Bronze with honorable mentions. And the National French Awards for Levels Five, Four, Three, and Two. The National Latin Awards. My mother would be proud. Level Four. And Level Two Latin Awards. German Awards, Level Four, Three, and Two. German Awards, Level Four, Three, and Two. There's something about the, when you look at the foreign languages, you look at the awards and in many aspects, I always think in, in Penfield, you know, three things. Opportunity, opportunity, opportunity for kids to find what they love, teachers that match up with that, and they excel. And to be able to excel in foreign languages that way is really exciting to see. Other things that were happening, Coaches vs. Cancer, another great cause that is now in three different athletic seasons anyway. Raised eight hundred and seventy dollars for American Cancer Society. It's a wonderful event. I was able to be asked to participate, more than just reading the lineup, sang the National Anthem with my friend Rich Green, Fairport Principal. That was a great night. It was under the lights at the Towne Field, which is now going to be about a minute from where I live. And I, and to see the, the community coming out and people driving by, oh, I saw the lights, so I stopped by. People that were former parents and former players and just the way that the multi-generational fabric of the community. And then the Little League kids came over. I know I'm seeing that for the first time, but I just thought it was amazing. And it was kind of raining, it kind of sprinkly raining, but no one really noticed because they were just enjoying themselves so much. Teacher recognition. Our high school teacher, Bob West, named this year's winner of the High School Chemistry Teacher of the Year Award for the Greater Rochester Area for the chapter of the American Chemical Society. And he also spoke at the National Honor Society induction. Very, very funny, very brilliant. We were just fortunate to have him here for so long. Really amazing man. We will miss him. Art exhibits, we've got at Canal Town Coffee Roasters. Not much time left this Saturday to go see our outstanding Penfield art. And music honors, Diane Abrahamian, been named a quarter finalist for the first ever Music Educator Award for the Grammys. So it's exciting just to be honored as one of two hundred and seventeen out of thirty thousand entries. And this Thursday, I believe, is the Choral Concert, that you'll be able to see some of the, the great, amazing work. And if you're, you know, take a look at the conductor when, when you watch Diane conduct and you'll see what's happening there. It's just very special, amazing. And we're, we're looking forward to, hoping that she's selected as the finalist, but no matter, she's a star in our hearts for sure. And with that, we now are to the, another star in our hearts. We've got Dr. Leslie Good, who brave, bravely and boldly took on the challenge of securing a decision or recommendation regarding the K-five math textbook adoption, which was a daunting task. Oh, we've got something in between there?
Yes.
Oh.
I think Mr. Jim Dozer.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. You sure, Jim? Our music educators are so flexible.
Thank you, Mr. Dozer.
Well, thank you. I have brought along my star sidekick, Nicole Whitehead, who is the RTI Math Coordinator at COBLES. And she helped along with the other eleven members of the Elementary Math Committee to work through this process. So we're gonna give you a review of the process, go over the data that we collected and reviewed, and then give you our recommendation for adoption. Do we have a clicker for? Okay, so we'll start by reviewing the timeline. So over the month of May, teachers and parents reviewed resources and provided feedback. The Elementary Math Committee, once the teachers and parents had had time to review the resources, the Elementary Math Committee spent a day actually, doing a very thorough analysis of the resources and the feedback that had been collected. The group then completed summary evaluation forms and some data reports. I then took those summary evaluation forms and data reports and presented them to the district administration. So the principals and the superintendent's cabinet. That group reviewed the evaluation forms and determined which resource we would be presenting tonight. Just to review for the, for you and for the public, the essential criteria that the district was looking for in math materials, we were looking for a natural progression from the elementary level to the middle school. As I mentioned before, our middle school receives students from four different elementary buildings. So it was very important that there was a connection between what is taught in fifth grade and then where the sixth grade teachers pick up. Obviously, we need a close alignment to the Common Core, both the content standards, which are, the content tells us what we need to teach, and then the standards for mathematical practice are the standards that tell us how we're going to teach it. We were hoping for a balanced approach to math instruction. That's what we have been using for the past six years and it has been working, so we'd like to stick with that. Digital tools right now are very important, both in the classroom and at home, for teachers, parents, and for students. And then seamless support materials for our RTI programs. Our RTI programs that are elementary buildings are very strong. So we were hoping to find a program that provided us with materials for students that struggle, students that are on level, and then extension opportunities for students that have mastered the material. And then our final criteria was high quality professional development for teachers that not only strengthens their mathematical knowledge, but also helps to deepen their teaching of math. And the resources that we reviewed, we looked at Math in Focus, which is Singapore math. The reason we looked at the Singapore math, Singapore has experienced success for a number of years and their pedagogy was cited in the research that the Common Core is based on. Math Expressions is written by Dr. Karen Fuson. She is very closely connected to the Common Core. She works very closely with the authors of the Common Core and she even has authored some of the progression documents that curriculum directors like myself use to help dissect and, and pull apart the Common Core. So the analysis that was completed by the Elementary Math Committee, we, there are six key components that we looked at. Correlation to the Common Core. This was surprising for us. It was not what we had expected. Math Expressions actually aligns more closely to the instructional specifications of PARC assessments. And you ask, what is PARC? With the Common Core, there are two separate consortiums that are developing national assessments. One is called Smarter Balanced and one is called PARC, Partnership for Assessment Readiness in College and Career. New York State is a PARC state. These assessments are scheduled to begin in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. PARC provides us with different instructional specifications by grade level. In other words, they tell us seventy percent of your teaching time at a grade level should be spent teaching this, twenty percent of your time at a grade level should be teaching this, and then ten percent of your time should be taught teaching this. And when we looked at that alignment, Math Expressions was actually pretty spot on. Math in Focus, because it is the Singapore math, it included additional content that is outside of the Common Core. So we had a, a very lengthy discussion around that, the teachers on the committee. And there was some concern amongst the committee members that that content, it's not necessary for us to teach. And with the Common Core, the purpose of the Common Core is to have more time, to be focused, and to go deeper with the mathematics. And we were, there was a concern as to whether with Math in Focus, we would be able to do that with the additional content. We also looked at the survey, the feedback that we'd gotten from teachers. We had seventy-five teachers respond. The feedback for both programs averaged on the good to excellent scale. Math in Focus rated slightly higher. The survey feedback from the parents. We had nine parents respond. We had done a math information night where we had the company for both programs actually come out and do very nice overview presentations from the parent perspective. And we had pretty good attendance at that. And then the books were on display at the district office and at the library. I also sat and had the books available for parents to view before, during, and after the joint PTA meeting on the budget. The feedback that I kept getting from parents, and this was verbal feedback, was that they trust the teachers and the teachers are the experts and whatever the teachers choose, that really seemed to be, to be the trend. And we were talking today, as educators, that, we were very proud in, in those statements. So like I said, there were very few trends in the, in the survey data, but it's probably likely due to the, the small responses. Then we did pros and cons of each program. Turns out that there were more pros for math expressions, including the alignment to the Common Core. It does have a separate RTI component that comes with the program that Nicole and some other teachers have been using with their RTI classes and have found it to be very useful. Also, there are additional resources, digital tools, additional problems. The assessment resources include a fluency component. The majority of the cons for Math in Focus unfortunately were Common Core related and really focused around that, that the focus of Common Core wasn't where the, excuse me, the focus of Math in Focus wasn't where the focus of Common Core is. Then we went back to the essential criteria that the district had deemed what we were looking for. And math expressions aligned more closely to those essential criteria. Again, the concern over, around Math in Focus was that additional content. Based on all this data, we completed summary evaluation forms and those evaluation forms were developed around criterion outlined by the authors of the Common Core. And it turns out that math expressions met more of those criterion. So as a result, we presented, or I presented all of this data to the principals and the superintendent's cabinet. And as a result, we are presenting math expressions to you for potential adoption. And I'm gonna, Nicole's been using math expressions in her classroom and I'm gonna have her give you some of the highlights of math expressions.
Okay. So one of the first things that I have found a positive of the program is its specific alignment to the Common Core, particularly to the PARC specifications, the seventy, twenty, ten, that Leslie was referring to. We actually did an analysis where we looked at the percentages. We actually calculated percentages of lessons and linked them to the Common Core standards and they were almost exact to seventy, twenty, ten, which was, as a teacher, comforting to know that I would not have to go supplement outside of the program that they were giving us. We also thought that it was really evident that they had a dual focus on the understanding and the fluency of the Common Core standards, which can just, again, deepen teachers' knowledge of the standards. We really liked the RTI component, teachers, through feedback, almost all teachers commented on that. There's a separate resource for Tier One, Two, and Three students. I've been using the Tier One and Two, a little bit of the Tier Three materials. They really just, rather than having to go, again, outside, I think it would be nice for all the buildings to be using common materials, whereas I might be presenting different materials than an RTI teacher at Indian Landing. This just gives us a commonality, which is nice. They also, we've learned, have center challenges, they have differentiated instruction cards, and they have specific lessons, again, for each of the three tiers in the teacher manual. Another thing that we liked was that the students frequently critique others' work. They formulate arguments and justify their conclusions. So when Leslie earlier was referring to standards for content, there's also the standards for mathematical practices, which are the eight standards that go throughout. And, and this is really where we want to start shifting our focus to, because we've been, this year, trying to get teachers more familiar with the content standards and, and it's just as important for teachers and, and students to know the mathematical practices. So the math expressions does a nice job of incorporating, they call it the little puzzled penguin, where at the end of units, they'll have the puzzled penguin do something either right or wrong, and then students have to analyze whether it's right or wrong and, and then prove it. And then from there, a bunch of math talk comes about. So students are not only are learning the content, but they're talking about math, they're reasoning, they're wrestling with problems a little bit, which is definitely something that we want them to do, to become stronger mathematicians. The assessment resources include the fluency component, which we talked about. The formative, they have formative and summative assessments. They also, I like, have a section at the end of, after every assessment on common errors that students would make and then prescriptions for those errors that teachers can follow. So it's sort of helping the teacher do that data analysis step for them. We also, the, looked at the digital resources for teachers, parents, and students. They had like a plethora of materials. They had online assessments, they have professional development videos for teachers, they have ITools, they have digital manipatives. I started playing around with some of those in class and I, I feel like anything you put any, anytime you put anything up on the screen, and it's not you, the kids are just like, oh my gosh. You know, we did a thing with coordinate graphing last week, I was playing around with it, the kids would give the, the points and then it would plot it for them and, and it would become visual. Algebra, we did some things with scales and they would literally see that in order to balance, well, if I take three away from here, I have to take three away from here. And just to show them that visual, you know, in another way, the students, it really, it clicked for, for a lot of kids. So I really like the digital resources. The manipatives are nice, they, you know, they're pretty similar to any other program, really. I mean, the base ten materials, the counters, two D shapes, three D shapes, connecting cubes. But one of the things that was specific to this program, as well as the Math in Focus, is the bar modeling, which isn't necessarily a manipulative, but it starts as a manipulative with cubes, connecting cubes when the kids are little. And then it starts into, it becomes bar modeling, which for math nerds like me is really exciting because I really like bar models. But this program's nice because the bar modeling would continue and it would be a common language among all four buildings that then the middle school teachers can capitalize on when it, when it comes time for algebra. So then that leads to the progression to grade six through eight. You know, I feel, having taught fifth grade for eleven years in one building, that it's really important that there be some consistency among the buildings. Now that I'm a Penfield parent myself, I feel that all four buildings should be speaking the same language so that when our kids do go to middle school, it's not the sixth grade's teacher's job to redo things. If they all come to us with this consistent program, K-five, really deeply aligned to the, to the content standards and mathematical practices, I think that that's just another plus for us. And then lastly, we really liked the idea of potentially collaborating with other schools like Webster, Restaurant, Western Quay, schools that are currently using this. We're talking about, you know, getting together with them over the summer and sharing Smartboard files and, and just resources and coming together. So we like that idea.
Yeah, even though you haven't approved the resources, we've already been talking with Webster's again about getting together. So our implementation timeline. At the June Board of Education meeting, the resource will be put up for adoption. If it is adopted, over the summer, we will revise our curriculum maps to include the new resource. In August, we would have the initial professional development for elementary teachers on the Common Core and math expressions. With the new staff development days being implemented into the, the upcoming school year, we're looking at using some combination of October, December, and January to provide ongoing professional development. And then February two thousand fourteen, we hope to provide you with an implementation status report on how the implementation of the program is going. Questions?
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments?
Being the language person that I am, I just, and I am not a math person necessarily, but what I do like hearing is, more so than anything else, is your, your commonality among the four elementary schools. I think that's huge because it's neat to have the individualism of each of those I think that's huge, because it's neat to have the individualism of each of those schools, but it shouldn't be in math. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, I would echo that. When you talk about standardization, and people always talk about efficiencies in our school district, that's clearly one of the ways to do it. I did want to ask a little more about the digital resources for parents. Can you talk a little more about those and how you would use those?
Well, the parents, the parent component, they actually have, the student activity book can be done online. So they have what's called the e-activity book. So you, as a parent, or anybody's parent, would have access to the exact same books that are being used in the classroom. They also have an app that can be used on tablets, on iPads, so.
Kindles.
Kindles, I know my kids are always, you know, practice your facts, they go to the Kindles and the iPads, now not the flashcards. So they have an app that can be used in conjunction with that.
There's videos for parents to access to show them. They're short.
They're very short, like an overview?
Thirty seconds to maybe a minute, a little bit over a minute, on the instructional strategy being used in that lesson.
And they have it for each chapter, which is kind of nice, because I know that, you know, years ago, when I was teaching investigations, what we were doing in the classroom was great, but it would go home, and parents would say, "This isn't the math I did. I have no idea what this means." And so now, because this, again, is not the math that we did, they can go access it, and they can learn about bar modeling and number bonds and those kinds of things that they're gonna see.
Parents can also access the virtual manipulatives that the students are using in class, so that students can get right on and show the kids, they can show the parents how to do it. Using the manipulatives that they've used in.
Base time blocks, and they can build numbers, and.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Camille?
I just, I'm glad that part of your timeline was to come back in February and let us know how it's going. And I don't know how much time it would take, but I would, I don't know what bar modeling is. And I'd love to, like, if you could show us an example or pull up that SMARTboard, just because I would just love to see, just, if you, in the next six, nine months, as you think, "Oh, this is a lesson, it's, you know, that 60-minute video," or 60 minutes, excuse me, 60 seconds. I would watch it with you, Nicole, as a math nerd. But, you know, just sometimes there's that visual for us that I think would enlighten us, "Oh, that's what, why it's making sense to them and why it's working."
And it really, really makes sense for students that struggle with math, those visual learners, because it lays it all out. Like, a math problem that I've been doing, I mean, I had 5th grade math students dividing and multiplying fractions this year, because I laid it all out with bar models. And problems where, you know, Bill and Joey have X amount of, you know, apples combined, and Joey has three times more than, it draws it all out in models, and it totally makes sense. And they get it. It's really neat. It just, there's a lot of power behind it. I think it's neat.
And Camille, you reminded me, one of the pieces that we hope to include in our implementation is our opportunities for parents to come in and learn more about the program, and ask questions, and learn about the bar model, because I think it's important that we keep parents on top of the program, just as much as the kids are.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you for the process you have followed, involving all stakeholders. It's just really great, especially the parent piece. You know, we all know it starts there for them to be able to support the students. So we really, really appreciate all the extra efforts. Leslie, I saw you that one night where you were sitting with the books, and no one there, you know? So I'm glad you heard a couple of people who stopped by and asked you a few questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Now we have Jim Dozier, our Director of Music Education. He's very patient, although I did see him tapping his foot, but it was consistent quarter notes, very consistent.
Take me just a minute.
Just while Jim's setting some things up, commenting on the process. And it's one of the things we want to make sure, is that we have input at all stakeholder levels. There may not be decision-making authority at those levels, but we want to understand that everybody has a voice, and we're listening, and that we also do very thorough research. And one of the exciting things about the math research that was done and the work that the committee did is, it really wasn't the, kind of, the name brand going in was Singapore Math. But when you really take it to those levels of aligning to the criteria and looking at the fine details, then the obvious choice became expressions. So it was that level of thought and the process involving those teachers that really allowed us, I think, to make the best decision. And I'm excited about the resources that we're building, and not only for the teachers, but for the kids and for the families. And you talk about the language of all buildings, it's gonna be happening at all homes, too. So that's exciting. It'll be interesting to see how this works.
Okay. Before we start this presentation, I'd just like to go back to what Steve said about the award that Diane Abrahamian has won as this finalist. You know, there's awards, and there's contests, and there's recognitions, and some of them mean something, and some of them don't. This one means something. And I, with the students that I work with at the Eastman School of Music, I tell them, "If you have an opportunity to observe one of the finest pedagogues in the country, not just about music, but about teaching, about life," and I urge them all to get in and observe Diane in a class. So I'm just so thrilled that she's received this honor, and would not at all be surprised if we see her walk on the stage at the Grammys soon, so. Okay, so, let's talk a little bit about the Futures Project. Thanks for this opportunity to update you about that. I'd like to start out with some of the successes that we have. Our Hybrid or Blended Health Summer Course. And just a reminder that a hybrid or blended course is one that mixes both online class time and face-to-face class time. This is our third year for summer health. This program allows us to teach kids our curriculum on a schedule that is good for kids, with our teachers, and it saves money, because we don't have to have those students enrolled in the BOSI's health course. Our, in our third summer, from second year to third year, our request for spots in that summer course, those two summer courses, is up from 100 to 150. So it's meeting great success with the students as well. Our Hybrid Business of Music Class, this was our first full-year blended class, and we're just wrapping up this class. And this has allowed us to be both very efficient in instruction and present some unique opportunities. And in just a few minutes, I'm gonna take you to that online classroom, so you can see what that looks like. Then we have these activities that I refer to as business model learning activities. These include our summer music program, the college essay boot camp, the SAT prep courses that we've offered. And again, this allows our teachers to work with students in these extra extended learning opportunities. It provides flexibility for kids and for parents. And the business model comes in because not only do our teachers get paid for this, but we make a profit. In fact, this year, our SAT prep courses made a $4,500 profit. And those funds in the music, or not music, in the math and English department, they've been talking about how they'll use those funds for next year, and they're planning to supplement field trips and guest speakers with those funds. So that entrepreneurial thinking about how can we look at what we do to bring income in to support our program is a big part of the Futures Project. And then we have the Flexible Lesson Program that was run as a pilot last year. That program allows an option for students at Bay Trail and the high school who are in band and orchestra to take lessons before school or after school. About 10% of our students participated in that last year, and I'm just doing the scheduling for that this year, and it's gonna be about 12% next year. So this, again, is an opportunity for us to think outside of the school day. How can we serve certain students and parents who feel that this is important? So these are some of the successes of the Future Project this year. So, moving forward, this is our big topic. We would like to create a consortium of area public high schools to offer online and blended classes that focus on elective courses that are often very, very valuable to students, but difficult to enroll at numbers that make it financially okay to make run. Where we might have a terrific class that can only attract eight students here, but it might also attract eight students at Fairport and eight students in Pittsburgh or Westeranacoid. So we'd like to create a consortium of area high schools that will come together and offer these types of online and blended classes, so that every student in the consortium members has an opportunity to take these classes. That's the what, and the question is why. Well, it's happening, whether we do it or someone else does it. Online learning is here, and it's pushing into the public schools. And frankly, we'd like to be the ones to do it, because we think we can do it better, because we know our students, because we know our communities. And I really do believe that it's going to happen without us or with us, so we might as well lead the charge and be able to control the curriculum and control the quality, and keep that relationship between teacher and students. So who? We're anxious to have any and every high school in this area join us. We're not picky. And we would like to have many, many schools join our team. When? Absolutely, right now. We're already behind the eight ball. Universities are pushing into K-12 with online courses. Large for-profit educational publishers are pushing into K-12 schools. And they are pouring millions of dollars into developing these courses. So we need to do it now. And one interesting thing about course registration for high school students is it starts earlier and earlier and earlier. So when I say now, I mean, we have to be ready to go by November 1st with the courses that we can offer in a consortium, because that's when the course registration process begins. So we're working very hard to drum up support among our colleagues. Tom Putnam has spoken a couple of times at the County Principals Association. We're going to be asking Dr. Grimm to continue to push that at the superintendent's table, and our new ASI to do the same thing. How are we gonna do it? By personal outreach. Tom and I actually did go to East Rochester a few weeks ago and gave a five-minute presentation that extended to about 10 minutes about this, in the hopes of asking some of their folks to join us. So we have some challenges. One, I put up there is energy versus inertia. And I'm not going to make a political statement here. I'm only going to say that there is some inertia that builds when stress increases. And stress on teachers right now is increasing. And so the energy that we have with people that want to do new things is sometimes mitigated by that inertia. So that's a challenge for us, to ask teachers to step out of their comfort zone when that stress exists. And we also know that change and status quo, that's an eternal battle. Most people like to stay in the status quo, and schools are more conservative than just about any other institution I can think of. So we're really trying to push the envelope here, and it's difficult for some people. So, that brings us to some of our needs. Camille and Catherine have been very helpful in trying to get us on the agenda of the Monroe County School Boards Association and do a presentation for them. So I'm gonna ask you to help, continue to help us with that, as soon as we can, and I know that may not be easy. Or other ways that we can communicate with other boards, because I think it's time for our boards to also be visible and supportive of these ideas. That will help us as we're approaching administrations in, at different high schools in the county. And I'd also like to extend an invitation. If there's a board member, or more than one board member, that would like to be part of our group and meet with us as we meet and talk about these ideas and implement plans, we would love to have someone join us. And we haven't set our meeting schedule for next year, but we'd love to have someone as a participant. If I had to boil this down to one essential element to succeed, it would be that this remain a teacher-driven project that has administrative and board support. As soon as it crosses the line to become top-down, it will fail, because we're asking teachers to step way out of their comfort zone. So I think that's essential, that it be a consortium that is, to a great extent, directed by teachers. So, I thought you'd like to see what an online classroom looks like. This is my course, The Business of Music. See if I can find it here. There we go. Okay. This is what kids see when they open up their module. And this is last week. You'll see that there's the five days of the week, and May 21st and May 23rd are in red. That's because those are our face-to-face days when we meet in the classroom. The other days are online. So this is what our week looked like last week. On May 20th, oop, I don't know why that happened. I'm using a PC, and I'm a Mac guy, so I take no blame for what's going on. So May 20th, students were preparing their final presentation, that was their assignment at home. On the 21st, which was an in-class day, we interviewed a composer, Yuka Vitasari, who is here from Finland, who won our composition contest. So there was an in-class interview. And then we have this thing, we're doing a Socratic seminar, and I'm gonna take you to what the students, let's see, PCs. Okay, there we go. So they would click on that, and it talks about the Socratic seminar, which is about the most important copyright royalty issue in the entertainment business today, and that is streaming. And especially internet streaming and radio streaming. So they have three questions that they're considering. But what I want to show you is that the introduction is on YouTube, it was prepared by Mr. Berkby.
Today I'm going to be talking.
And that's about all you have to hear of that. But the point is, is that that's an example, yeah, poor Paul, is that it's an example of a flipped classroom, where the lecture happens online, and the work happens in the classroom. Okay. So then they come back to school, well, they come back to the face-to-face classroom. Maybe? Yeah, I'll do this instead. Okay. And there's some presentations on Thursday, and then I want to show you this. This is the Socratic seminar text preparation. There's something pretty interesting about this. Say it again?
The little circle up that Penfield dot U D makes it thinking.
Oh, okay. Usually doesn't take this long.
He thinks that was great.
I see. So what you're gonna see in here, hopefully, if it opens up, there we go, is that there's, why is it doing that? Is that there's four, there's four texts here. These four texts were from The New York Times, Rolling Stone, Billboard, and then this is the actual excerpt from the House as they're debating this topic. And I'm gonna, it's a lot of pages long, but this is, these are the texts the kids have to look at. But here's what I want to point out to you. There's three letters attached to this in support of different positions. One is from a group called Break of Reality, a string group that we just had here in Penfield, and who, we interviewed the leader of this group earlier in the fall. And it's, interestingly, written by a fellow named Patrick Laird, a member of that group, who was a student at Harris Hill Elementary School. So it's really interesting that the kids are able to make this connection between the United States Congress and Penfield. So they prepare all of these texts, and then they come to next, to this current week, which And what you're gonna find is, if you're familiar with. And what you're going to find is, if you're familiar with the Socratic seminar where the goal is to talk about issues and understand other folks' points, that's not, that's back in April. This is why I have a Mac. But two of these sessions are done as online discussion forums where the students have to make three different posts. An initial post about their, their response to the issue has to be one to three paragraphs long. They have to respond to each of their colleagues and then they have to write a response to one of the, or two of the colleagues who responded to their posts. So, even before they get to the face-to-face classroom, they're having discussions online. And then, finally, which will happen next week, we'll have the final face-to-face Socratic seminar here. So, the point in all of that is that using both the online and the face-to-face format is, provides for some very unique opportunities. Okay. That's what we're doing. That's what we're up to. I appreciate the opportunity to update you and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Karen?
Jim, the consortium idea, how is that different than what Bosse's does for us?
Well, let me point out that Bosse's will play a very important role in this as they do with our online course. They house Moodle, our learning management system, where we just were. So, they have a very important technical support. What's different is that we want our teachers and the teachers in the other high schools to own these courses, to make them their courses and to come together and offer these courses in what I suppose you could call an exchange system between school districts. For example, I might have 10 seats available in the Business of Music class that students from Pittsburgh might take and they may have 10 seats available in another elective that we don't offer. So, we essentially have some bookkeeping of how we exchange spots.
Okay, I get that. Great. Also, as far as presentation and getting the word out, have you submitted anything to speak at the NISP convention coming up next year?
No.
Is that something? Okay, that, oh, this fall, yes. Sorry. Might be an idea if it's not too late to get something in there. I am fascinated by this and I would be happy to participate in it with you, too. I'm sure that other board members are interested as well, but this is great. This is, this is what Penfield and districts need to be on that cutting edge. We're not turning the cruise ship around. We don't have the time to turn that around. We're already going and I think that's wonderful and thank you so much for your time involved in this, as well as the teachers that are driving this project. I think it's just fascinating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? John?
I love the model and, you know, in my experience in the membership organization business, we started up a couple of education things online and your point about having ownership, you know, of that by the individuals is a good one because it becomes complex if you don't have those boundaries set up when you do it. And as I was watching, you know, as far as getting other organizations interested, I'm wondering if it's not more of a model for an actual not-for-profit you would create that would bring those schools around, around the table to drive it because, you know, they're always going to ask, you know, the whiff of what's in it for me. But also to, you know, to have your institute as it, as it may be set up to make sure that, you know, when someone comes to the table with creative content, that they own that. And then, and I've had some experience with that and it can be tricky, but it can be accomplished. And the organizations that I worked with, the reason we did that was we wanted, we knew we had the best, we had the best talent for our industry and we wanted to be the ones out there. So, I think your point about being the first one because there will be a lot of pretenders that come and they will not have the criteria that meet any of our guidelines. So, I think that's critical, but I certainly would offer to help in terms of any models that you look at to create or organize and do that because there are examples out there that it wouldn't take a lot to duplicate as far as not creating a lot of governance, but getting buy-in through participation in governance. But I think it's, it's great so far.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mark?
What kind of hurdles you think you'll have with the restrictions on how courses can be taught?
Do you mean in terms of format of the courses, online versus blended?
That and requirements for teachers to be in the classroom. You know, are there any kind of restrictions that the state would have that would affect how you can present these hybrid courses?
Our model is that whatever goes in the school goes on the, for the online course. That would mean class size stays the same. Right now, if we ended up with teachers that taught several online courses, we'd have to start talking about what their day looks like. If we're talking about format, the challenge that we have is when we want to keep some personal contact with students. So, we do that in two ways. One is through class size, we're not a mass online open course where there's 10,000 students enrolled, you know, it's 30 kids max, it's 30 kids max. And the other is that when, even when we do almost all online courses, we still want to have at least three class meetings face-to-face during the course of a semester, beginning, middle, and end. Does that answer where you were going?
Yes, yes. Now, and then, that's something you'd have to address when you, when you, when you share with other school districts as far as their courses versus your courses.
That's, that's correct. There has to be, and I think some of maybe what John was driving at, too, there has to be some guideline for what the expectations are. And we want to do that without it being a top-down. We want all the people to buy into what that would be.
You mentioned that there's pretty much a closing window of opportunity with, with for-profits coming in here. How long do you think it'll take you to develop this, the consortium and the material and start to launch this to where we're actually in use?
Well, the key is how many people we can get to buy in. If we, we already have the professional development organized and we've taken it ourselves. We organized and taken it with a wonderful guy, his name is Rick Costanz at MCC. And Eric Brewer also helps us with the Moodle part of things. So, if we can get teachers and school districts to sign on by early fall and come up with courses and not come up with, talk about the courses that they would like to offer, we can then put them in the course catalogs. We can do our professional development in the winter and spring. Teachers develop the courses, spring over the summer and ready to go in September. It's a lot of work to take a course that you teach in the classroom and move it to an online environment. And that's part, you know, when I did my ed, my little marketing with the teachers here, I probably made a mistake and said, this is going to be a lot of work for you. The first year is tough. Second year's not so bad. Third year, it's great.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
All right. Thank you. Jim, I know two of our board members were very lucky to be in your classroom because it worked their schedule. I maybe, you know, in the fall, if we could schedule another opportunity for anybody who would like to come and see, you know, what the classroom is like, working with the students, you know, at a convenient time for you. You know, we'll talk with Dr. Grimm about this and we'll take your invitation to have board members sitting and look at this probably over the summer when we're doing board assignments to see if there is a board member. We already have one who is interested, but, you know, see who else is interested and would like to sit on that committee when we're looking at our, you know, representation on different committees in the district. Thank you so much for the presentation for, this is just, I don't know, I have no words.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is very short. It's by Dr. Sansucci, School Business Administrator, here in the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act. Mark?
Thank you. Good evening. What the purpose of this report tonight is really just to remind the board and also remind the public what you might already know, but I think that we've sort of lost track of, my sense is that we've lost track of a little bit in the context of schools and that's the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, which I've listed the other acronyms here that you've seen it referred to as. So, PAPAC and ACA and Obamacare and healthcare reform. You know, I have had, you know, I think that there is a perception that this, you know, depending on who you talk to, that this may not have happened, that it was changed, that it doesn't affect schools. It does. And in fact, enacted in 2010, but the majority of it takes place on, the majority of the requirements that impact us take effect January 1st of 2014, which is only seven months from now. And there's quite a lot to be done. We've begun this process. We're still working our way through the requirements. I expect that those requirements will change, but it's going to be consequential for us. So, how's it affect Penfield? Essentially, this was my attempt to create a one-sentence summary of what we'll be dealing with in the near future. So, all large employers, and we are one, are required to offer minimum essential health benefit coverage. Those words have consequence. So, the health coverage that we offer has to meet certain requirements. The coverage that we typically offer, that you're aware of in our negotiated agreements, easily meets that minimum requirement. But there's going to be another plan for reasons that I'll explain in a little bit. To all full-time, 30-hour employees, that's trickier than you think and their dependence. It has to be affordable, which means that the cost share between the district and the employee has to meet certain requirements and it has to, and the insurance itself has to have minimum value or we pay a penalty. So, what does all that mean? Well, the penalties can be severe. So, for example, one of the largest and most significant penalties is triggered by an employer such as Penfield failing to offer coverage to a full-time employee. Actually, we're required to offer a coverage to at least 95% of all full-time employees. Full-time is defined as 30 hours per week on average over whatever we choose as the, up to a year as a look-back period. Well, you know, normally you think, well, that's okay. We don't really have that many full-time employee, or we don't have that many part-time employees, 30 hours shouldn't be a problem. Most of our full-time employees by contract are entitled to healthcare coverage. But think about all the folks that we employ across the systems. And the easiest example here, I think, is substitutes. So, substitute teachers are currently at-will employees. They come here, they work. They, they work based on, you know, their, the need and also their schedule. And it is possible entirely for them to work five days in a week, more than 30 hours. If they're the kind of employee who manages to work full-time in various capacities, perhaps they had a series of long-term subassignments and they achieve that average over the look-back period, they're entitled to healthcare coverage and we didn't offer it to them. So, they would be entitled to it on a go-forward period. We have to identify those folks. What about full-time coaches? Coaches who teach in three seasons? All those kinds of questions, we're going to have to start asking because the penalty, if we miss this, if we fail to offer it to at least 95% of the group, it's a single penalty. All of our full-time employees minus 30 for reasons that are obscure, times $2,000 is $1,008. That's the one, that's it. That's essentially what happens if, is if that IRS penalty is triggered by those folks going, filing their taxes, getting a subsidy and going to the exchange. So, the penalties can be consequential. There are other smaller ones. This has been referred to as the death penalty. There are other smaller penalties depending on affordability and so on. But it means that we're going to need to begin to attend to it. So, we need to identify who those people are, substitutes, coaches, part-time, seasonal employees. We bring in, for example, seasonal employees who work full-time, but just for a summer. Do they then qualify under what terms? All those questions are going to have to be identified, worked through, and a solution in place. We're, as a consortium, as, as the board knows, we participate in a healthcare consortium. That consortium's working to develop, there is no requirement in this that we necessarily offer these people who are not otherwise entitled by negotiated agreement to healthcare coverage, the plans that are in our agreement. We have to offer them a plan that meets the requirements. So, the consortium is working on development of a plan that will meet the requirements, but obviously be, have less in it than, than the existing negotiated plans. We need to figure out who these people are and track them or who they might be so that we can identify them in time. There's a whole series of notices that have to be provided to employees, policy systems that'll have to be put into place and other things that we haven't thought of yet. So, really, this is just to, to remind the board, to remind the public that this is real. It's going to be, you're going to hear much more about it as we move fully into implementation over the course of the next seven months. And it's going to have impacts on negotiated agreements as we go forward where there aren't negotiated agreements and there may be full-time employees. We're going to have to develop processes for those folks. So, it's going to be very consequential to us. I don't have lots of answers and I don't have lots of specific changes because we're really just beginning to try to understand and to wrestle with this. The consortium has a subcommittee working on identifying best practice for the community. We think that as a consortium of school districts in Monroe County, we want to treat similarly situated people similarly. So, that's all in place or in, will be in place. It's all in process right now. So, that's, that is really all I wanted to point out tonight, that it's real, it's going to impact the way we do business and then you're going to be hearing lots more about it. So, this is really in the, and these are three slides of foreshadowing, I think is the way to, to best put it. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mark. Board members, any questions or comments at this point? John?
I think it's good to look at it. I know an organization I'm involved with is doing the same thing and they're in the healthcare business, nursing home business, and they tend to employ a lot of part-timers. But a lot of businesses are trying to look at this as a function of, do I put someone at 28 hours a week, as we may have heard about, but also looking at, and some of this may apply, can your coaches or other people be independent contractors? You know, whereby a written agreement basically says, I am opting out of that. And, you know, just something to look at as you go forward because others are looking at that, in particular with coaches, you know, and that may be covered under the bargaining agreement, but, you know, everything isn't the status quo. But just to look at the opportunities that you can have flexibility, you know, for us as you look at that.
Thank you. And I appreciate that. I do think there's some choices that we'll have to make that are, that we need to understand the implications of before we make choices, those choices. So, for example, the question of a look-back period, which is, you know, how far do you look? We can go back up to a year for calculating that 30-hour average. The look-back period is also the go-forward period for the provision of coverage. So, there's an advantage and a disadvantage there and how does that work? You know, really, that's going to depend on some good work, some careful work in trying to figure out who our populations are, who might qualify. You really don't want to miss anybody. So, it's that careful kind of work as you go through and then making decisions that make sense going forward.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mark.
That is it.
All right. This concludes our superintendent's report. Board members, we are on board business right now on page five of your agenda. Facilities, we have a series of change orders. The change orders in your agenda have been reviewed by and are supported by Architect Scott Dool, Project Manager Gary Huffman, Clerk of the Works Jim Cordero, and Assistant Superintendent for Business Marks Sansucci. May I have a motion, please, that the change orders described in your agenda be approved?
May I have a motion, please, that the change orders described in your agenda be approved? Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Financial items. One, authorization to contract with SEI Design Group. On May 21st, 2013, the voters approved the proposition authorizing $1,900,000 for roofing on Scribner Elementary and renovations and additions at the Bay Trail Gymnasium. SEI Design has submitted for approval a proposal for the necessary design and construction administration services this project. Construction costs are estimated at $1,534,000. The proposal calls for a fixed total fee of $121,950. This is equivalent to 7.9% of construction costs. May I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to negotiate final terms and enter into an agreement with SEI Design for services related to the capital project described above? Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Workers' Compensation Participation Agreement. Penfield was one of the founding members of a consortium of Monroe County School Districts established in 1987 for the provision of self-insured workers' compensation benefits. Since that time, our participation in this consortium has resulted in $2.9 million of savings to Penfield taxpayers. Countywide, the consortium has saved all participating school districts $39.7 million. Because a significant amount of time has passed since the establishment of this consortium, the Workers' Compensation Board of Directors has recommended that each participating school district readopt the municipal cooperative agreement authorizing participation in the consortium. A copy of this agreement is attached. Approval of the following resolution is recommended. Whereas a cooperative self-insurance plan for workers' compensation pursuant to Section 119-0 of the General Municipal Law has been established through the Rochester Area School Workers' Compensation Plan. And whereas the Board of Education for Penfield Central School District concludes that it would be in the interest of the district to participate in the consortium, now therefore be it resolved that the district enter into membership in the plan pursuant to Section 119-0 of the General Municipal Law. And be it further resolved that the chief school administrator be and be, and hereby is authorized and instructed to execute the necessary documents on behalf of the district to participate in said plan. May I have a motion, please, that this resolution be approved? Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Liquidation of accrual for retiree health insurance. In 1998, the district established an accrual for the costs of employee retirement in anticipation of changes in the required accounting of those expenses. This accrual was periodically increased through the years when funds were available and the district was eventually able to establish an accrual equal to the amount of one year of retiree health costs. The accrual was then maintained at that level. In the June 30th, 2009 management letter, Mr. Raymond Wager, the district auditor, recommended that this accrual be reevaluated. Additionally, the Department of Audit and Control has provided additional guidance through school districts audits. These audits indicate that an accrual of the type which Penfield had established is not consistent with recent accounting guidance relating to the funding of these retirement obligations. Accordingly, the district initiated a five-year plan to eliminate the accrual by reducing it by 20% per year for five years. The end of 2012-2013 fiscal year would complete year three of a five-year plan. The current accrual balance is $1.4 million. The district's independent auditors continue to recommend that the accrual be eliminated and that the current plan be accelerated. Accordingly, the recommended option is to liquidate the accrual and transfer the balance to the employees' retirement reserve. The funds will then be available from this reserve for support of future budgets as per the previous plan. May I have a motion, please, that the $1,384,090 accrual for retiree health insurance be fully liquidated and the balance transferred to the employee retirement reserve by no later than June 30th, 2013? Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. This brings us to our policy review. We have a policy for first reading, policy 3410, District Code of Conduct on school property and at school functions. And Camille, I think you're leading us in this.
Yes, we've heard a lot of discussion from last meeting. Mr. Hennig was here, we talked about code of conduct and Dr. Grimm introduced it earlier. This is basically our policy that we're going to have a code and then the code of conduct will be a standalone document, which will be something like, what is it, 60 pages? But then it will be reduced to three plain language or, I think, for me, a term I understand better is age-appropriate, one for the high school, one middle school, one for elementary, sort of abridged versions of the code. So a lot of work has gone into this and we wanted to be at a place where we had this separate code of conduct policy, a separate code. And I'm just really grateful to all the work that Dr. Grimm got everybody doing so that we could get to this point. So, so that's up for a first read. The public will see that on our website under Policies for Review if they want to make any comments. And then the Policies for a Second Reading, you've heard a lot about. These represent a lot of work on behalf of Sue Coomer, but also our attorney. So much new language is coming up every few months with the, people refer to it as DASSA, Dignity for All Students Act. We just need to be very current in our language and our policy so that we're following the, the letter of the law. Again, those are also on the website for public comment or input.
All right, thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments at this point? Okay. So may I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education approve policy 7551, Sexual Harassment of Students, and 7552, Harassment, Discrimination, and Bullying as Presented? All right, all those in favor? Thank you. Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Donations. We have donations totaling $6,670 for items in the 2012-2013 budget. They have been granted to the district for the purpose of permanent art collection and arts and education by Family First Credit Union, the Bay Trail PTA, and Scribner Road PTA, and the exact amounts are listed in your agenda. May I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education approve an amendment totaling $6,670 to the 2012-2013 budget as shown in your agenda? The amount submitted both as revenue and expenditure items and that the board expresses its gratitude to the donors for their generous support of Penfield Schools. Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. President's remark. I believe Barb and Catherine and Mark attended the Memorial Day ceremony that was held by the town. Would you like to tell us about it?
It was actually a very, very beautiful and moving ceremony. Penfield, Bay Trail in particular should be very proud because Anna, who's a seventh grader, was the winner of the essay contest. And it was a very moving, moving essay. And the other two recipients were from Finney School, so it was very, very nice. Catherine?
That was the first ceremony that I went to for this, for Memorial Day. And, and like Barb says, it was very moving. It was, it was a picture-perfect day yesterday. It was a beautiful day and it was a somber, but it was, it was hopeful too as well. It was, it was wonderful. I was glad I participated and it was good to see Mark and Barb there as well.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Wouldn't add anything. It was a gorgeous day. It was, it was an outstanding ceremony. It was very well done. It was a pleasure to participate.
All right. Thank you for representing our board and our school district there. It is a beautiful ceremony. Many of us have gone through the years and the town does a beautiful job with it honoring our patrons. I also received an email from Jody Siegel regarding the budget vote that I wanted to share with you. Congratulations to you all on passing your budgets yesterday. This obviously was Wednesday, May 22nd. With 100% of our local budgets passing, clearly your communities value their public schools. School budget votes are unique in government. A high-stakes assessment where the public gets to grade the work of our schools. Although people are voting on the district's spending plan, they are also registering their feelings about the overall quality of the work the district is doing. The strong support shown for the budget was a powerful statement about our communities, where countywide, 66% of those who showed up voted yes. Congratulations again. And this was from Jody Siegel, Executive Director for Monroe County School Boards Association. And I wanted to share that with you because that was really the feeling that we had after, you know, our budget vote last week. And that concludes President's remark at this point. We have no unfinished business. Under new business, our budget vote and election results. On May 21st, 2013, following vote results were announced by the Chairman of Election, Mr. Brad Salei. Proposition number one, the budget passed with 1,243 yes votes and 605 no votes. Proposition number two, the bus proposition passed with 1,332 yes votes and 480 no votes. Proposition number three, the capital facilities resolution passed with 1,338 yes votes and 452 no votes. We have three newly elected board candidates, Ms. Barbara Babiars, Mr. John Piper, and Mr. Mark Elidge. Barb and John will be here for a three-year term and Mark will be here for a two-year term, commencing last week. And I think that's it as far as new business. So congratulations to all of you, congratulations to the community. Thank you to every person who gave us feedback, who was here at Conversation Education, who filled out surveys, who sent us an email, who stopped us in Wegmans and who had something to say about the budget. You know, we really appreciate those feedback, the, the feedback that we got. And this is how we're able to have Penfield Schools the way they are. So we really, really appreciate everyone's involvement. And I think that is, that's it. Since we have no more business, may I have a motion, please, that the meeting be adjourned at 9:17 PM? Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you.